Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2013 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. We will begin the meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Wiegand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will the clerk please read the statement of meeting procedure?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2013. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of leaving the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Please step forward, state your name and address, please. Morning.
Good morning. My name's Lori Lewis. I live at 6245 O'Wais Road in Newcastle, California. Good morning, board members. I'm here today to address two major concerns that I have. This is in reference to the pending proposal of the event center/community center issue. Myself and several other residents of Placer County acted in good faith when the planning department held its workshops surrounding issues that were of concern. I understood that the Board of Supervisors wanted to address the issue of code enforcement with these new types of venues. Imagine my shock when learning the planning department had totally left out that component in their proposal. Not only was I shocked at the lack of addressing any means of enforcement, but the notification for an event, a proposed event at an event center, is an 11-by, uh, eight-by-eleven piece of paper posted at the gate of the event center. In this age of technology, is this what the county is proposing for notification for neighbors? And how effective is it in the rain? Once again, the county is recommending that a single person or zoning administrator be the deciding entity for granting or denying a permit. This only leads to more appeals and complaints and lacks transparency. This is what started this whole debate. The other issue that I would like you to be aware of, there is a brewery in Placer County that has been allowed to open its doors under the wine reordinance. There is a pond located within 50 feet of the tasting room. My issue is not with the brewery, but with the county for giving its approval to allow a brewery to serve alcohol so close to open water. When I visited the brewery, I witnessed a man, a woman, and two toddlers at the pond's edge feeding the ducks. This seems to be a big liability problem with the county having the deepest pockets. There were no signs, no fences to discourage use of this facility. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on any item? Chief Harris, good morning.
Well, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Brad Harris. I'm the unit chief for CalFire's Nevada Uba Placer Unit. I'm also the fire warden for Placer County. I promised you back last spring that I would not predict what fire season was going to be like, but come back to you towards the end of it and let you know what it was. What we saw this year was a very active summer. We started off with very low, uh, low fuel moistures. We also had our indices, the things that we judge, the potential danger of fire go off the charts. And as a result, we saw a number of initial attack fires. With the help of our, our local government cooperators and CalFire, we're able to keep most of those fires to a fairly small size. We assisted the US Forest Service on the 25,000-acre American River, or American Fire, which was about the biggest that we had, not only in the unit, but in Placer County this year. We're running into a little bit of an issue here towards the end of fire season. We've done our normal fire season downstaffing of engines. We went from 21, now we're down to 10 engines. And with the predicted rains of three to five inches about a week and a half ago, we decided that we would open up burning and to get some of those piles that had been lingering since last spring out of there. What we quickly found is the rains didn't materialize. Uh, we're actually seeing our indices still off the chart. And as a result, uh, we, we started to get a number of escapes from our burn piles. So we've immediately shut burning down again. Uh, we're doing it through AQMD right now. Uh, our hope is, is that we get a storm that's going to produce a little bit of moisture and then we're going to open up burning again. But that's going to be a little bit. So we're asking that our, our people in the counties that we serve help us out. Uh, again, there's no burning allowed right now. We're not going to allow it until the rains actually come and we see, uh, visible precipitation that's going to amount to something to allow us to open, uh, burning up again. But that could be a little bit down the road. I see nothing in the long-term predictions, long-term being 10 or more days, that has any measurable precipitation in the future. So our, uh, and we are going to get a wind event in the next three days, small one here, larger one in Southern California. So our fire danger is still very high. Unheard of for this time of year, we're actually seeing our dispatch levels, the, the things that we gauge, the amount of equipment that we're going to see in the medium to high range. Uh, usually by now it's low, or we don't even worry about it because it's so moist that we're not having fires. So we're still have potential to have a fire. It's going to take wind, it's going to take, uh, starting early in the day to have a very large fire, but we still have fire potential out there. And we're just asking that our citizens help us and, uh, not do the things that could cause a fire and cause us to, to have to, uh, commit a lot of resources to, to something that we just don't have resources right now to commit.
Right.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the last fire season if anybody has any. Well, thank you.
No, thanks, Chief Harris. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Holmes, um, members of the board. Anita Reese, I'm with County Executive Office and Organizational Development. And with me today, I have Jody Hoffman from Health and Human Services.
Good morning.
And Jim Miller from Facility Services, and they have an announcement.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for letting us come today. Um, we are really excited to announce, um, we are doing our first annual employee art show. And the times we're running this is December 5th through February 28th. And the domes is our location for most of our artwork. You'll be seeing artwork out here from all of our county employees. And, uh, actually Jim and I are both representing some art in the, in our show, so, Jim?
We would personally want to invite you, with also the employees of Placer County and the public, to come out and participate. Um, Sunday, sorry, December 4th will be the, uh, the opening night, and we, we highly encourage all of you guys to be out. With all that said, done? You have any questions?
No, it's December the 4th in the evening. It's going to be?
Yes, from, um, 4:00 to 7:30.
Will there be snacks?
Yes.
There will be food and beverage.
Okay, that's important. Okay, we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, okay. Did you turn your phone off, Supervisor?
Uh, no, I, I was just thinking.
It's appropriate, I guess, to have it here at the domes that so many wonderful works of fiction originate right here.
Now is the time for Supervisor Committee reports. I do want to report that we're going to be removing, uh, Department Item 5A Administrative Services bid, uh, from the agenda. It's not quite ready to go forward, so, um, that's my announcement. Is there any announcements? Supervisor Duran, did you have a?
Yes, I did. Um, do we have any veterans in, in the audience today? Please stand up.
Yeah.
Please stand up.
If you may.
I want to recognize you for your service, uh, to our country and providing us the freedoms that we have. Uh, thank you very much for your service.
All right, very good.
I also wanted to report, I also wanted to report that we had a wonderful ceremony down in Roseville at the memorial, Veterans Memorial Hall, uh, to honor our, our veterans. Uh, we had, um, some very special guests. Uh, we had our, our, um, assembly person, Beth Gaines, our Congressman, Tom McClintock, and several representatives from, uh, the county and the city. So, thank you very much again.
Supervisor Euler?
Mr. Chairman, as the board is aware, Supervisor Wiegand and I are headed to, uh, the United Kingdom, not at taxpayers' expense, um, next week for a meeting with Warwick to hopefully encourage them to, to come join us in Placer County at the, uh, the, the project we approved down in the South County five years ago now. You'll recall that as a part of the, uh, approval of that project back when Drexel was considering making that their home, we adopted, um, a number of different items, including, uh, I want to, was it an MOU? Is that how we referred to it? Where, whereby, the understanding was established that if Drexel didn't move forward, uh, then the county had the option of actually encumbering the property. Uh, if Drexel chose not to, to move forward, well, clearly Drexel hasn't. We have a, uh, hopefully a suitable user for the site, yet we still have this issue out there as, uh, regarding the county's authority to basically take the project ourselves. And so I would like if the chairman would be willing to, uh, agendize a review of that requirement so that the board could consider modifications to, uh, that previous understanding so as to, to make it clear to our friends at Warwick that really the county doesn't have any interest in taking over the project. We'd like a user there, please. Thank you very much. So, uh, if the chairman would be so kind as to, uh, in the future, agendize that item so the staff can bring it back, we can review that and send the right message to hopefully our future partners.
All right. We'll try to put that on the next agenda for the December, when's our December meeting?
December 10th.
December 10th. Does that give us enough time to bring that forward?
Yes, um, my office is working with the CEO's office on that issue, and we should be ready to bring it on the 10th.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. In regards to Veterans Day, uh, there was a great parade in Auburn, uh, yesterday. We had the Sacramento Sea Cadets were there in full force, Placer High School Band, the E.B. Kane Band was there. Uh, it was a great turnout, and then we had a ceremony at the Armory where we honored all our veterans. I particularly recognized, uh, the members of the United States Marine Corps because the 10th was their 238th birthday, uh, so I recognized them. And Congressman LaMalfa came and, uh, he wasn't prepared to speak, but he gave a very elegant speech about how he appreciated the, the services the veterans have done. And then he's working in, uh, at the congressional level on making sure that veteran services are fully appropriated. Is there any other supervisor reports? All right, seeing then, we will now move to our 9:10 timed item. Uh, what? Oh, the consent agenda. Sorry about that. Uh, is there any items on the consent agenda that any member of the board wants to move for discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address any issue on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is David Campbell. I live at 820 Twin Rocks Road in Granite Bay, California, and I am the appellant on the Micro-Technics Appeal.
Sir, that is an agendized item, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a consent.
Yeah, no, we, we'll have that at 9:30. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else out there that has any consent items that wish to be pulled for discussion? Seeing none, again, we'll bring it back to the board. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Euler?
Holmes? Hi. And now the time has arrived for the proclamation declaring the Fourth Friday of November to be the official start of the 20th Annual Mandarin Festival and Mandarin Growing Season. And it states, November 12th, 2013. And, oh, who's coming forward for this? All right, Elliot Rose and, of course, Joanne Niff. November 12th, 2013, in the matter of a proclamation recognizing the Fourth Friday of November as the official start of the 20th Annual Mountain Mandarin Festival and Mandarin Growing Season in Placer County. Whereas local agriculture is an important and historically significant component in Placer County's cultural fabric, as well as an important contributor to the local economy. And whereas the Newcastle Area Business Association started a one-day festival in November 1993, 20 years ago, featuring the Mandarin citrus fruit as a way to support local growers and commerce. And whereas the Newcastle Area Business Association has collaborated over the years with the Mountain Mandarin Growers Associations, whose members have been growing delicious, seedless, mountain mandarins for over 50 years in Placer County's fertile soil. Whereas from that first year to now, the festival has expanded to three days, attendance to increase from about 1,000 to more than 30,000 visitors, and the event moved to the Gold Country Fairgrounds to better accommodate vendors and attendees. And whereas proceeds from the event have made it possible for the Newcastle Area Business Association to award four $1,000 scholarships annually to graduating seniors in the Ophir, Newcastle Penrith area. And whereas the festival has also helped to promote health benefits of Satsuma mandarins grown in Placer County, which are tree-ripened, hand-picked, easy to peel, considered a super food, offering high doses of vitamin C and natural senefrine, and a healthy snack for children and adults that can be found at local farmers' markets and member orchards throughout Placer County from mid-November through January. And whereas through the hard work of the Newcastle Business Association community, volunteers, growers, and festival directors, the Mountain Mandarin Festival now celebrates its 20th anniversary this year, held by custom the weekend before Thanksgiving, and will feature samples and sales of hand-picked mandarins, Mandarin-enhanced foods and drinks, including shakes, popcorn, syrups, barbecue sauces, and olive oils, in addition to handcrafted items from more than 150 vendors for sale and entertainment. Now therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors proclaims Friday, November 22nd, 2013, to be the official start of 20 magical years. Mandarin harvest season encourages all citizens to plan to attend the event and support our local Mandarin farmers throughout the designated weekend beyond by purchasing locally grown mandarins at the festivals, farmers' market, or visiting orchards throughout the foothills. Congratulations. I'll bring this down to you.
You can hold it, yeah. That's great.
We'll hold you.
Okay, we'll hold you.
That's fine. No, it didn't go up. You broke it, Joanne.
Thank you.
And now, if you would like to say a few words?
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you so much for the proclamation. We really appreciate it, and thank you for your support over the last 20 years. I think Joanne wants to, uh, make a few, uh, comments, so I'll turn the mic over to her.
I would just like to say that it never occurred to me 23 years ago that I would be standing here today. I don't think any of you were here 20 years ago. Were you here 20 years ago? You were? Okay. Were you? Thank you very much. Uh, at any rate, um, I would just like to say it never occurred to me that I would be standing here, and I just think what it, what it translates for me is, is that a small number of people can make a huge difference. Because it took a very, very minimal core of people who started that festival 20 years ago. And, um, and now I especially applaud the growers, the farmers, because we have so many Mandarin orchards. And, and the wonderful thing is, in my mind, is that most of the people in the state of California still don't know about it. So we still have some work to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's the story on the, on the growers? Are there plenty of fruit this year? I know it's, I know it's come in early.
The, the fruit this year is, we've been already picking in my yard for a week.
Yeah.
And I never usually start picking until the 15th of December. Um, I mean, we're a month ahead.
Yeah.
And so the fruit is abundant, um, and it's, it's so, I, who knows? It, we had some really interesting weather because the fruit is amazing. I actually thought that there were mandarins here today to share. I am now going to go home and get a box, and I'm going to bring them back and I'll put them outside so that everybody gets some mandarins.
Okay.
And please come to the festival.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the time has arrived for a special commendation. This is a presentation of a resolution commending Chuck Grant, Placer County Surveyor, on 35 years of dedicated service, public service. And I have a nice little resolution here that I'm going to read. Uh, Mr. Grant, would you come up and? November 12th, 2013, in the matter of a resolution commending, I almost said condemning, but commending Chuck Grant for 35 years of dedicated public service as an employee of Placer County. Whereas Chuck is retiring from the County of Placer Community Development Resource Agency Engineering and Surveying Division after 35 years of dedicated public service. And whereas Chuck was hired by Placer County in 1979 as an engineering aide in the Department of Public Works. And whereas Chuck was promoted five times between 1979 and 2002, and finally promoted to the position of county surveyor in 2008. And whereas, as the county surveyor, Chuck's dedication to the Beaches Committee has protected public rights along the shores of Lake Tahoe. And whereas Chuck's knowledge of the subdivision MAC Act has ensured proper and legal subdivision of land. And whereas Chuck's attention to things that matter has helped applicants and county staff in achieving better projects. And whereas Chuck's passion to, to the rewrite of the Placer County subdivision ordinance has consumed the last 10 years of his life. And whereas Chuck's leadership, commitment to excellence, and good-humored nature will be deeply missed by his peers, his staff, and his residents of Placer County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation the exceptional service of Chuck Grant and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. Congratulations, Chuck.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. And.
Thank you, Matt. You betcha. Let's have some photos and then I'll let you introduce your family. The mic is yours, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, again, thank you, board. Great presentation, Supervisor Holmes, and I've had a, an enjoyable last 35 years that I remember. I don't remember anything I did not enjoy. So, um, my, my parents came to see this. I'd like to introduce my father, Bill Grant.
Hey, Bill.
And my mother, Josephine Grant. And my girlfriend, Barbara Chica.
Hi, Barbara.
Here in my corner. And at the risk of saying anything that's going to hasten my departure, I'm going to make this short and sweet and just say, "Thank you very much, and, um, appreciate your leadership over all these years."
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on Chuck's behalf? Oh, here we go. Hi, Dave.
Just one last time. Good morning. Dave Cook with RCH Group. And I'd just like to say that as a developer, and more recently as a consultant, for the last 20-plus years, I've had the honor and privilege of working with Chuck. And for a guy whose world is defined by the MAP Act and Meats and Bounds descriptions, in spite of the focus on details, he's always been able to keep sight of the big picture. And he's approached problems that always arise on, on projects with a sense of humor, with creativity, but never losing sight of, of what his role is. So I'd just like to say that I hope his legacy continues on for years. We'll probably miss him more than he'll miss any of us.
But it's been a privilege working with him. Congratulations and good luck, Chuck. Thank you. Thank you very much. All righty, then we'll move on. Thanks a lot, Chuck, for your years of service and your ability to explain to people about how things work in the county in terms that they can understand. And I've always appreciated that. Thank you. So now we'll move to our first, uh, department item. Oh. Oh, I see, correct. Item number six, Facility Services, South Placer Adult Correction Facility Steam Boiler Replacement Project. What, what did I miss? No, we, we pulled that from discussion. We pulled that off. Yeah, right? Yeah. Sorry. Thanks.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Rob Unholz, Capital Improvements Program Manager. This morning, we are recommending that your board award the base bid for replacement of the 260 horsepower steam boilers at the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility to Division 5-15 Incorporated in the amount of $639,000 with no new net county cost. And authorize the Director of Facility Services to execute the contract upon County Council and Risk Management's approval and approve any required change orders consistent with County Purchasing Manual and Section 20142 of the Public Contract Code. On August 20th, staff recommended and your board approved the solicitation of bids for the steam boiler replacement project. Bid solicitations were advertised and posted on Public Purchase Procurement's Online Bid Notification Tool. Bid documents were downloaded by 17 trade contractors and 10 building exchanges. Bids were opened on October 16th, resulting in only two bids. Apparently, earlier in that day, there was a, a large hydronic similar project bidding at Sierra College, uh, in the two-to-three million dollar range, so that may account for the low, low turnout. Bid alternate one, for the sale or credit of the existing boilers received no dollar amount in the bid response. Staff will be working with procurement services on a separate process to market the existing boilers. The apparent low bid did exceed the estimate by $89,000. The estimated total project cost for the steam boiler replacement is $670,000, including equipment, installation, fees, and contingencies. And as you will recall in the August 20th item, that should alleviate the cost, the ongoing annual cost of around $500,000 for a boiler, for, for staff to attend the boiler. There are sufficient funds appropriated in the capital project account, and with that, staff recommends approval of the requested action. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Supervisor Duran?
I, I just have a clarification. Uh, with regards to the $639,000, when you say that, that there's no new net county cost, there was a cost to, to replace the boilers, right?
Correct.
Okay. This cost doesn't go above the money that we have in the fund?
It does not go above that budgeted for the South Placer Correctional Facility.
Okay. So, so we're still at the 639?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to, just want to make sure that we understand that. Thank you.
So there was savings from when we, when the Justice Center, when the South Placer Correctional Facility was built, there was savings built in to that estimate.
There are, there were contingencies built into that budget. Yes, and that, that's where this, this.
And we're going to sell the old boilers?
We will, we will be working with procurement to market those separately. We got two responses. One from the second bidder of zero. One from the second bidder of zero, and one from the apparent low bidder of to be determined. So, I suppose there's possibly a chance we could get a credit from them, but we will be working on a parallel process.
All right, great. Any other questions from Board members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience who should address the Board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 6A, South Placer Adult Correction Facility Steam Boiler Replacement Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. We will now move back to our... Our 9:30 timed item, Community Development Resource Agency Planning, Microtechnics Incorporated Third Party Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of a Minor Use Permit. Good morning, Roy.
Good morning.
Today, you are being asked to... An appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of a Minor Use Permit that would allow for the sales and repair of firearms as a home occupation. And this is at 7970 Twin Rocks Road in Granite Bay. The Planning Commission approved the minor use permit on August 22. An appeal was filed by the neighboring property owners, David and Paula Campbell, on September 3 about the applicant, Gary Gogler, who represents Microtechnics. And the appellant's are here and they would like to speak today. First, I'd like to introduce Roy Schaefer. He's with Planning also. He'll provide you with an overview of the proposed home occupation and the issues of the appeal.
Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to turn the slide?
I do. The subject property is located in Granite Bay at 7970 Twin Rocks Road, and it is approximately 1,000 feet east of the intersection of Auburn-Folsom Road and Twin Rocks Road. The property is not part of a subdivision, but is in close proximity to the Walden Woods and Hidden Lake subdivisions. The 2.5 acre site has an existing single-family residence and a 572 square foot detached garage. The home occupation for the sales and repair of firearms would be located in the detached garage. This home occupation, Microtechnics, Inc., would be a part-time business and include online sales of weapons and ammunition and custom loading of ammunition for rifles. The property has a gated entry and a paved driveway to the detached garage. The garage has an alarm system and would also have a safe to secure customers' firearms. The appellant's, David and Paula Campbell, raised two issues in their appeal. Issue one, the appellant's assert that the proposed land use is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The Planning Commission determined that with the incorporation of performance standards and conditions of approval, that the sales and repair of firearms is in fact compatible with the adjacent residential uses and surrounding neighborhood. These include limiting the business to the detached garage, making sure that there are no external signs of the home occupation, restricting the number of commercial deliveries to the site, and the number of customers, limiting the amount of gunpowder to be stored on-site, prohibiting flammable materials within the detached garage, requiring vegetation around the detached garage to be cleared for fire safety purposes, and also requiring the applicant to obtain a business license and all required approvals from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, the California Department of Justice, and the Placer County Sheriff. Issue two, the appellant's assert that the Planning Commission incorrectly categorized the proposed land use, and it should fall under the definition of explosives manufacturing and storage. The Planning Commission's response and interpretation of the zoning ordinance is that the proposed land use is not an explosives manufacturing and storage land use because ammunition or small arms primers manufactured for use in shotguns, rifles, and pistols are not included in a definition of explosives in the California Health and Safety Code, Section 12,000. In conclusion, the Planning Commission found that the Microtechnics, Inc. request for a minor use permit to allow for sales and repair of firearms as a home occupation is appropriate for the subject property and the surrounding area and is an allowable use under the home occupation definition. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors take the following action. Deny the third-party appeal filed by the appellant's. Determine the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. And reaffirm the Planning Commission's Approval of a Minor Use Permit to allow for the sales and repair of firearms as a home occupation based on the findings contained in the staff report. And that concludes the staff report. EJ and I are available for questions at this time or later.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the Board members at this time? Supervisor, don't see one. Okay. Now, who's coming forward next? The appellant? All right. Please come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Paula Campbell. I live at 8020 Twin Rocks Road in Granite Bay. I live next door to Gary Gogler, and I oppose this permit. Along with over 100 of the residents in my surrounding neighborhood, my neighbors, who have voiced their opposition at having a gun business on Twin Rocks Road, we do not feel that a firearms and ammunition business is compatible with the character of our surrounding residential family environment. With due respect, we ask that you repeal the Planning Commission's Approval of this minor use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Campbell, please come forward.
I will try once again. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm David Campbell, husband of Paula Campbell, who live at 8020 Twin Rocks Road in Granite Bay. I do believe that this is in fact an explosives manufacturing and storage business. This is not a firearms business. The definition of explosives manufacturing and storage is defined by the county code under 1704030, which specifically includes ammunition, small arms ammunition, in the definition. And also, within the county regulations, any definitions, the specific shall supersede the general. This is under 170402, under land use definitions. In other words, the more specific requirement is the one that matters. Also, under the Interpretations Section of the Code, 1702050, if there are conflicts, the most restrictive shall apply. Given all of these features, it seems to me that this is in fact an explosives manufacturing business, and it should be denied, and our appeal should be accepted. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Campbell? I see none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Oh, Supervisor Ullrich?
There's a question for staff. EJ, are you prepared to address the conflict that was just referenced?
Yeah, the zoning ordinance defines under, you know, what home occupation is, and I can read that definition real quick and find it right here. Home occupation means a gain for employment of the occupant of a dwelling in a limited commercial activity with such employment activity being subordinate to the residential use of the property. When you go to the actual home occupation section, it allows, talks about allowed uses and talks about uses prohibited. Under allowed uses, talks about home occupation such as accounting, bookkeeping, computer programming, art, dance, music, swimming lessons, et cetera. And it also says, under allowed uses, sales and repair of firearms provided that a minor use permit has first been obtained. Under uses prohibited, there doesn't say anything about sales and repair of firearms. It talks about commercial retail uses, auto repair and painting, and other outdoor business activity that's not consistent with that section. The zoning ordinance does have a definition of explosives. Explosives manufacturing and storage, a separate definition not talked about in home occupation. And if you bear with me, it says it means a commercial manufacturing and storage of all types of explosives, including but not limited to blasting powder and blasting caps, dynamite, fireworks, gunpowder, high explosives, and the manufacture of conventional explosives for weapons use. And it also refers to the California Health and Safety Code, Section 12,000. And what that says is basically what the state's definition is, and I'm going to go to 12,000 subsection F, which says explosives does not include any destructive device as defined in Section 16460 of the Pinot Code, nor does it include ammunition or small arm primers manufactured for use in shotguns, rifles, and pistols. So, long story short, you know, the Planning Commission found that this use does fall under a home occupation, sale and repair of firearms.
And that finding by the Planning Commission is consistent with previous findings by the county and previous issuances of home occupation permits?
That's correct. The county did approve a similar type home occupation about a year ago, a little more than that, up in the Clipper Gap area. And that apparently has been in operation, and we haven't heard any complaints on that.
So, purely from a consistency standpoint, staff and legal counsel to staff are confident that our staff has the authority to issue this kind of permit under our regulations as written?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Grant.
EJ, I just want to get back to this definition here included in Article 17.04.030. It looks like it talks about both manufacturing and storage. And just to clarify for the record here, is the applicant for the minor use permit manufacturing any type of explosive?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Because that's how I read this. It says manufacturing and storage, and that seems consistent with the second line that you read, and manufacture of conventional explosives. Now, if there was a period there, I would say that it would include ammunition. But because there is none, and it says for weapons use, then I think that it would be strictly limited to the manufacturing and storage of the explosives themselves, not the cartridge. That's just my... Would you concur on that?
I would agree, and I think the Planning Commission had that discussion and they agreed as well.
Okay, thank you.
If the applicant wasn't going to get a minor use permit, in other words, if this was just a hobby, he would be allowed to do this in his detached garage as a hobby. He could load ammunition, repair guns, if he wasn't applying for a conditional use permit, or a minor use permit. I mean, I'm sure there's people out there in the county that are gun hobbyists and do that type of, it's maybe not a business, but it's a hobby.
What I would say Supervisor Holmes is, you know, typically, you know, home occupations, if someone comes in to the county, they apply for a business license. That's kind of the trigger. And the way the home occupation ordinance is written is that you need to come in and get a business license, and we sign off on it. There's no public hearing, and there's a multitude of businesses that, you know, we in Planning sign off on. Do the hobbyists choose to get a business license out there? You know, whether it's woodworkers or someone's giving music lessons? No, not all the time. In Mr. Gogler's case, he's come forward, says he does want to operate a business, and he's going through the, you know, appropriate protocols to do so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions Supervisor Grant?
Just a comment. You know, I was just at Cabela's last week, and you can order these reloading kits online, correct? Right. And you can buy the powder online, correct? Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And there is some additional support for staff's position in that the Health and Safety Code specifically exempts quantities of gunpowder to be used in this home occupation business.
Okay. Any more questions from Board members? Seeing none, the applicant now can come forward.
Good morning, members of the Board and staff. I'm Dr. Gary Gogler, the applicant for the minor use permit being heard today. For the past 25 years, I've been doing custom loading for myself in my detached garage, always working for an edge in competition shooting, sometimes achieving it, and sometimes not. Hence, my foray into this new endeavor, because there's other competitors who don't do reloading that would like an edge as well. I commend the Board's staff for doing an outstanding job preparing their comprehensive report. And I'd say that we too want a peaceful neighborhood. At this point, it seems to me to be, how does one address negative emotional reactions such as "not in my backyard"? One does not do this, neither do I. All individuals have an opportunity to dissent, but no matter the volume of dissent, it does not counter the law. Did the Granite Bay MAC not follow the law? Did the Planning Commission not follow the law in approving the minor use permit? Not so. All entities adjudicated the issues very thoroughly and followed the law. The circular argument originally presented against my permit application is simply saying that neighbor complaints equals incompatibility. As such, it does not matter to them that complaints such as traffic, opportunism, et cetera, are without support. The fact that neighbors complain in and of itself is enough. It is the assumption that their negative views need no factual support. This is clearly false reasoning. It does not hold up against the law. The issue of explosives has already been addressed and dismissed. As such, it's quite redundant. Consequently, the Campbell's appeal should be denied, as recommended by county staff in view that my proposed business is legal under federal law, under state law, and allowed by county code. I ask that my approved minor use permit for home-based, veteran-owned, small business as proposed, submitted and recommended by county staff be issued, and that my business license as previously submitted be issued. Are there any questions? I may address.
Questions from Board members. Supervisor Ullrich.
Dr. Gogler, a couple of questions. You mentioned that you've been loading your own ammunition for 25 years on this site at this location. From a, I use the term business perhaps ill-advisely, but from a business practice standpoint, which is the practice of loading the ammunition, storage of the ammunition, will anything change with your obtaining this license?
No.
Okay. Would you please, I saw you and Mr. Campbell, and when Supervisor Grant asked about veterans in the audience. Your background?
My background, Bachelor of Science, Electrical Engineering, Masters, PhD, Defense Industry, and Civil Service for 25, 26 years. I retired from McClellan Air Force Base when it was closed by the BRAC, and I was on General's Staff as Chief Scientist and Engineer of McClellan Air Force Base.
As active-duty Air Force?
As civilian.
Okay.
Active-duty, I was at Wright-Patt in solid-state research, and here I was working on F-117 and ATF.
Okay. You, in association with the work that you currently do, you have a number of security clearances, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the practice that you've had as a hobby of loading your own ammunition, you have discovered that there might be a market for something along those lines?
Yes, and there are some examples that I have submitted that showed people who do this, and I think it's a good opportunity. Plus, being... Plus, being a veteran-owned small business, there are opportunities that come up from the government that are set aside for veteran-owned small business, and I'd like to compete for those.
Will any of those opportunities be impactful to the way that your property is run, managed?
No, because the quantities that the government would typically buy are quite large, and they would be drop shipped to whoever the government entity...
So wouldn't be activities that would be taking place on your property?
No.
Maybe nothing along those lines.
Don't have room for that.
From the standpoint of you actually taking the step to obtain the licenses, people have asked when discussing this, if you've been doing this for 25 years, why didn't you just keep doing it? I mean, why did you go through this? Why'd you get everybody's attention by pointing out the fact that you were doing it, and why put yourself through and the neighbors through all this?
Because it would be illegal.
And what would that do to your security clearances if it were found out?
It would be revoked.
So you would be jeopardizing, obviously, your primary livelihood, should you engage in that?
Exactly.
Okay. And so the only difference between what you've been doing in terms of loading your ammunition, how you store your materials, all the rest, the only difference is, for 25 years, you haven't charged anybody a penny for any ammo, and now you might charge?
Right.
Okay. Would you please describe briefly how the business would actually function? Somebody says, "I want custom ammo." What happens?
Well, it could take several scenarios about this. Typically, what would happen is they would send their long gun to me, and then I would work up a load for that gun based upon the twist rate of the barrel.
I'm sorry, they'd send it to you how?
Pardon?
They would send it to you how?
Oh, they would send it typically by Federal Express.
Okay. So FedEx van shows up and drops something off at your house?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, go on.
And then I would work up the loads, go out to Lincoln Rifle Club, that I've been a member for 10 years, shoot those loads to find out which one works the best, maybe come back and have to do some other loads, because those didn't work. And then ultimately come up with a load that the customer's gun works well with. And then they will have the data that says, "Here's what the load is. You can do it yourself if you want, or you could come back and order some more rounds from me."
Okay. And at which point, how do they obtain their rifle back and the ammunition?
I send their rifle back through Federal Express.
And the ammunition with it?
No, the ammunition has to go on common carrier because it's RMD.
Okay. So you use a legal method. My point is, you're not custom loading bunches and bunches of rounds and storing them on site at your place and keeping them there. You are sending the gun and the ammunition via legal method back to the person that ordered the ammunition.
Correct.
The, is it, in terms of operating your business, is it your intent to have any, well, you're already prohibited from having any kind of signage, is it your intent to have any onsite sales, or onsite ordering, or onsite anything?
I don't anticipate that, no. I wouldn't want people trumping through my property just like anyone else wouldn't want it.
Okay. Purely from a business practices standpoint, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions at this point.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Grant.
Yes, sir. I'd like to talk a little bit about the regulatory compliance that you're, scrutiny that you're under. Obviously, you've got the federal government looking at you. You're glutton for punishment there, but kind of tell me a little bit about what regulatory hurdles that you have.
Well, the first one is to apply for Bureau of Alcohol, Backline Firearms licenses, which I did, and are issued. Then is to seek a Placer County Sheriff Office license, which I did and have. The other thing is to be inspected by the fire marshal, who came out, Lawrence Benton Court, and signed off, saying it was appropriate. Then after the minor use permit, if it's approved, then I apply to the California DOJ being registered in a centralized firearms dealer list. And then after that, I apply to the NICs Instant Background Check system through the FBI.
So you're regulated by ATF?
Yes.
FFL license, correct? You're regulated by the county?
Mm-hmm.
You're regulated by the state? You're regulated by the fire marshal?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I do have a question. I see that the detached garage is alarmed?
Yes.
And is that just, is, how is that monitored? Does that go to an alarm company if someone breaks in?
Yes, it goes to Foothill Alarm, is centrally monitored.
Okay, and then how is it turned on? Does it go on automatically after you close the door?
No, you just enter a passcode, and then it gives you 60 seconds to get out.
Okay, so it's in your best interest to alarm it when you leave the...
Absolutely.
All right, okay. That's all the questions I have.
Just as a point of clarification, the board's role in this is, this is not strictly a legal issue. The determination in a minor use permit is that the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and that it's a judgment call made by the planning commission, and in this case, made by the board.
Thank you. Any other questions from the applicant? I see none, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And now I'll open it up to anybody from the public that wishes to address the board on this issue. Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Dr. Grace Lusk, at 8110 Morningside Drive, Granite Bay, California. Been a resident for 33 years, child psychiatrist for 40 years, over 40 years. I sent you a letter, I spoke at the planning meeting. It was not unanimous, it was five to two, I believe. There was questions regarding the amount of gunpowder, 20 pounds? Was it secured? Who would be actually going in to check and see how it was secured? And I brought up my concerns as a child psychiatrist who sees how kids can get into things together that individually they might not do. And I wrote you a letter regarding the attractive nuisance. This is not personal, or any aspersions on Dr. Gogler's business, or background, or expertise. But I'd actually like to go to the third and fourth concerns I had, and this is precedent. This is, I think, a test case, actually. I don't compare Clipper Gap to the Granite Bay neighborhood. This is a residential, very valuable property. This sometimes is the major investment that you have, is your home. And this is only going to be the first of many such requests, if you have, because you're going to, this is called gun dealing. I mean, whether we call it personalized ammunition, it's gun dealing. It's designer guns, designer ammunition. Mr. Gogler, or Dr. Gogler remarked on that at the planning, he agreed. When you sell your house, you have to disclose to the buyer that you have a gun dealership next door. I mean, that's, it's a nice, beautiful property, and it's a nice garage, but that is what's going on, and that will affect your values. Zoning protects the identity and value of a neighborhood. I understand in Colorado State, they have recently enacted legalization of recreational marijuana. I think it's possible, I hope not, but I think it's possible that California will do that eventually. But we have permits for gun dealers, we have permits for medicinal marijuana. I mean, is that the kind of permit that we can have? That would be legal. But when you change your zoning to allow this kind of business, it changes the value, and it affects the neighborhood. And this is not intrusion by neighbors into trying to demean Dr. Gogler. This is real concern regarding the effect on the neighborhood, the values, the safety. I would strongly urge you to think very carefully about allowing this zoning, because I think this is going to be just the first of many such requests. You know, yes, we have a lot of retired vets, and it's, I have guns in my house. My dad was a hunter. I actually have a moose head in the garage, if anybody wants it, they can have it. But I'm not anti-guns, but I think that this will change this neighborhood and the values, and even the surrounding areas, if these permits are, if this permit is approved. I thank you for your attention and this opportunity. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for Supervisor Yuler.
EJ, would you please scroll the slides back to the map showing the Gogler? Keep going, keep going. There we go. A lot of communication, as was indicated. Our office has received over 100 letters. Can't Sam surprise, given what has been distributed throughout Hidden Valley, throughout Lakeview Hills? And just to correct the record, it's actually Hidden Valley to the south and Lakeview Hills to the north, not Walden Woods and Hidden Lakes Estates. But the communications that were received anonymously sent via the mail to my mother-in-law, for instance, who lives in Hidden Valley, but on the southern end, over a mile away from this residence. The kinds of claims, fairly inflammatory claims about this operation, about what it would mean to health and safety and well-being in the neighborhood. If I didn't know better, I'd probably be writing a letter myself in opposition to this. But I do know better. And the simple fact of the matter is that this is, has been, an ongoing operation for nearly two and a half decades. No calls for any issue, safety, fire, no, nothing. One of the questions that keeps getting posed to me, as the county supervisor for the area, is, is this the kind of thing that I'd want in my neighborhood? Would I want this next door to me? Well, the fact of the matter is, my next-door neighbor, immediately adjacent, does load his own ammo. I've seen his setup. It's fairly impressive. It's not as clean and secure as Dr. Gogler's is, but right next door, my neighbor does load his own stuff. Don't know if he sells it, didn't ask, not my business to do so. But just for the record, Hidden Valley is my neighborhood. My family moved to Hidden Valley in 1970. The parcel you see off of Morningside Drive there, on the bottom of the map, EJ, if you hit your little laser pointer, the last little house you see on the left-hand side of Morningside as you drop down, laser is not working, there we go. Keep going, over to the left, that one right there, that's my folks' house. Go up to, EJ, and then across the street, right there. That's my 11-year-old son's best friend's house, where he spent five hours yesterday afternoon playing. Just six houses away from Mr. Gogler. At no point did I ever have any concern that my son, or his 11-year-old best friend, were ever going to be in any jeopardy from this man's operation. Right across Twin Rocks Road, at the corner of Blue Oak Lane and Twin Rocks, that was Lauren Neasley's house, where I used to hang out. She was my seventh grade crush. Across the road and up one, that was Jeff Wolfhar's house. Right across the street and up at the top of the hill, that was the Lee's house. This is my neighborhood. It has been for 43 years. 25 of them, evidently, he was loading ammunition. And in the entire history of Hidden Valley, Lakeview Hills, there's never been any incidents associated with this kind of activity. So what's happening? What's happening is, he's decided that his hobby, he wants to see if he can, as he moves into retirement, he wants to see if he can earn some money at his hobby. Does the fact that he wants to charge for the same ammunition he's been making for himself suddenly make this less safe, more impactful to the neighborhood? Not when I hear his business practice. Now, if he were saying, yeah, he's going to hang a shingle and invite folks in, and there are going to be all kinds of stuff like that going on, I would have a concern. But to his point, he has no interest in advertising his physical location. He likes his security and his quiet that he's established, and that he's maintained through his perimeter fencing and his alarms and all the rest. So in answer to the question, would I be willing to issue a permit like this if it were my neighborhood? The answer is yes, it is my neighborhood. And I'm there every week with my kids, and I suspect, contrary to Ms. Lusk, how you think it might impact, we're not going to see a whole flood of these things, because the county codes are very open. Anybody who wants to do this has to go through a process, and as we've heard, it's a fairly onerous process. And if there were people just champing at the bit, waiting in the wings to be filing for these kinds of things, there's absolutely nothing prohibiting from doing it right now. You have to meet all the requirements, you have to get all the licenses, you have to be signed off by everyone from the feds down to our fire marshal. And speaking of the fire marshal, I'm meeting with him about this, and the nature of the concerns about explosiveness and all the rest. I just posited the question. I said, "I don't store gunpowder. I do store ammo, I have a decent amount of ammo. I don't store gunpowder or anything to make this stuff, but I have a five-gallon gas can, a two-gallon gas can, and a one-gallon gas can, all sitting in my shed." He said, "Yeah, that's far more dangerous than what this gentleman has for his operation, from a health and safety, from a public safety standpoint, from a flammability standpoint, from a danger to firefighters and anybody else. That eight gallons of gas that I have stored in my shed is actually far more dangerous than what this guy has." So I am comfortable sitting here today, knowing that the gentleman who's been operating in his private capacity, now willing to step forward and do so in a regulated capacity, will maintain the health, the safety, the integrity of our neighborhood as we've known it for 25, and in my instance, 43 years. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'm willing to move that we deny the third-party appeal, that we determine the project is categorically exempt from the environmental review, and that we reaffirm the planning commission's approval of the minor use permit.
Is there a second before we move on?
I'll second that, and I just wanted to add very briefly that, for me, the analysis for me is the regulatory one. Here we have, you know, opportunity, there are probably quite a few people in that area that may or may not be doing this activity that's perfectly legal. For me, is it a legal activity? Yes. Is this a correct place that this activity is going to take place? Yes. Are there regulatory scrutiny on this business to alleviate or mitigate any of the concerns of the residents? I believe so. I believe the layers of regulatory apparatus and hurdles that he has to comply with are fairly significant, more than any of us would know if we're not in this business. So I will second that.
And one more point of clarification, this is not, the board's vote would not ever present a change in the zoning. Our home occupation provisions allow limited commercial activities, and it's presumed that those activities, limited as they are, are compatible with the residential uses.
Supervisor Wagan.
Appeals like this, I think it's important for the public to hear from us individually, so similarly to Jack. I'd just like to explain my vote, which will be in support of the motion to oppose the appeal. But I think there are two layers personally for me to this onion. One is the compatibility question that I think Jerry just alluded to, which is, can a home-based business behave in a neighborhood as if it's invisible? And I think traffic, retail trade, those kinds of things, signage, that issue is simple in this case for me. The other issue is that, you know, it's a firearm-based question... The other issue is that, you know, it's a firearm-based question, and I know that that gets a lot of attention particularly these days. But as a kid growing up, I reloaded my own shotgun shells. I still own firearms and hunt. And it's my personal experience that most gun owners, the vast majority of most gun owners, very responsible and knowledgeable. As Jack mentioned, it's very heavily regulated, so there's that additional layer of assistance. But I just want the public to know that I would never support this motion to oppose the appeal if I thought that there was any additional risk to the neighborhood from that perspective. But in fact, I think actually the neighborhood genuinely would be safer as a result of this facility being there.
Okay. Thank you. And I too am going to support the motion. I had several questions that have been answered during the discussion, particularly about the alarm system, and that there's not any guns being fired in the neighborhood. They're going to be out at the Lincoln Gun Club for testing of that nature. And so for those reasons, I will support the motion as well. So there's been a motion and a second to deny the third-party appeal filed by David and Paula Campbell, and reaffirm the planning commission's approval of a minor use permit to allow for sales and repair of firearms as a home occupation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Appeal is denied. We will now move to Item 7, Community Development Resource Agency Building Services Division, adoption of State of California Building Standards Code. Tim Wegner presenting.
Yeah.
What did I do?
Come back.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm, oh.
Whatever you prefer.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, Tim. I've got a 9:45 timed item about Health and Human Services Medical Clinic, Beelson-Herring County, Roseville Medical Clinic. Thank you Supervisor Grant for paying attention. Maureen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Maureen Bowne with the Adult System and Care Medical Clinics. And this morning, we do, as you said, have scheduled a public hearing to describe a closure of a proposed closure under statute that is identified as a Beelson-Herring. So we're asking this morning that you take two actions. One, that you have hold a public hearing on the proposed closure of the Roseville County Medical Clinic and approve the closure, as well as designate the Department of Health and Human Services to provide 24-hour information services regarding the closure of the clinic and alternative available medical clinic services. Originally in the planning of this, we had indicated that we expected this closure to occur November 30th. And since that time, with new developments related to moves of other facilities within that complex, we need to make it a little sooner. So we will be proposing that it actually close this week, November 15th, the end of this week. I'll get into that a little bit more, but I just wanted to clarify that piece. The Roseville site of the Placer County Medical Clinic is located at 1130 Conroy Lane, Suite 402. The county, as I'm saying, is relocating all the other Health and Human Services programs to 1,000 Sunset effective November 18th. And because of this move, what is happening is all the telecom services, which telephone as well as computer systems, are going to be disabled as of that timeframe. And so we think it makes more sense to propose that we have an earlier move in terms of the closure. We looked at alternatives, and this makes the most amount of sense. The landlord has indicated that they are very interested in selling the building and are looking at ways to do that, and they've already taken significant steps to sell the property. There is an alternative suite outside of this complex in that same area that could be identified, but it would take a bit of remodeling to have us occupy that space. The current scope of services available at the Roseville Clinic is limited. There is no primary care provided to medically indigent or other populations at this site, and the services are limited to immunization, testing for tuberculosis, and family planning. The closure last year, the closure will eliminate 1,580 patient visits. That's what occurred last year. And the clinic, just to make a point, is very limited operations. It's open Monday 8 to 5 and Thursday 8 to 12. The number of people served in the clinic last year was 1,360. The majority of the services are immunization. About 71% of the services are immunizations, primarily for children to meet school requirements. Those already occurred this fall. Testing for tuberculosis is requested by people who help at schools, people who are required to be tested for jobs, and by a small number of persons who are accepted at Gathering Inn for shelter. The remodel required for the move into the same building would be over $170,000. And we would propose that in this fluid environment of healthcare reform, committing to a long-term lease agreement, a new, a move would also require a multiple-year lease agreement, that the additional risk to the county for, it doesn't make sense because we do believe there's already services available in the Roseville area. The clinic is staffed with a couple of extra help, one extra help nurse practitioner, one extra help registered nurse, and one permanent administrative support person. That support person, admin clerk, is already stationed at the Auburn Clinic and just would be redeployed up there. So there would be no layoffs as a result of this action. There are multiple alternatives for South Placer residents to receive services currently provided at the medical clinic. WellSpace in Roseville provides primary care, family planning, and immunizations. This organization is able to serve many populations, including medically indigent, MCE, and those with Medi-Cal. Planned Parenthood is also established in Roseville and is able to provide family planning services. The WellSpace Clinic and Planned Parenthood have both been contacted and are available and ready to provide services to this population. Tuberculosis testing is available at multiple locations in Roseville, including Wellness Mart, Sutter Express, St. Vincent de Paul, The Gathering Inn, and Sutter Health Urgent Care. Placer County has been required to provide medical care to medically indigent adults as a state mandated responsibility since 1982. The Placer County meets this obligation through the Medical Care Services Program, MCSP. There are currently approximately 10 MCSP eligible persons who receive services in the Roseville area. This is down from 2,000 countywide as we've transitioned into the Affordable Care Act. So upon closure, these 10 people won't have their services changed as they will be receiving, as they currently receive primary care in the Auburn Clinic, and that will continue. They will also be able in the future to receive primary care with WellSpace, who is under contract with Placer County to provide this service. So it does mandate, the law mandates that we have a public hearing, so we recommend that you do that, and that we would be responsible to provide the 24-hour information on November, closing on November 15th. The closure allows Health and Human Services to more effectively provide mandated services in Auburn. We would also include a notice detailing the closure, as well as the information to contact us in Auburn through November 30th, just because we're making a change, we want to make sure people have that information. In terms of savings, sort of minor savings, about $40,000, which would include lease and staffing costs. Mostly, it's an avoidance of remodel costs over $170,000 to remodel. But really, we think that this change is really a better, sustainable business model for the county. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and do recommend holding the public hearing and recommending closure of the clinic as of November 15th, with directing Health and Human Services to take the appropriate notification.
Thank you. Before I open the hearing, are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing for testimony from anyone in the public that wishes to address the board on this item. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The item is moved. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Now, Tim, you can come forward on Item 7, Community Development Resource Agency Building Services Division, adoption of State of California Building Standards Code. Mr. Tim Wegner.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tim Wegner, your chief building official, and I'm here today to present to you the, an ordinance adopting the state's triennial building, fire, and associated codes with local amendments. While local amendments are predominantly historical amendments the community has come to appreciate, staff is recommending one new significant change to non-permitted structure heights, and I do want to share with your board today where there are at least three significant state changes that the state is mandating upon us. One of the significant changes comes to the state's accessibility standards, which includes, for the first time in the state's history, accessibility code will align with the federal DOJ, or better known as ADA standard. This is good for our businesses as we're finally closing the risk gap between the state standard and the fed standard, so we're able to enforce and actually check and approve documents today under the state standard which aligns with the fed standards. The state's energy code will also be changing, and with this change, the state will now mandate a solar readiness for all of its new homes in certain subdivisions. What does this mean? This means that the state's desire for net-zero energy homes by 2020 will mandate this objective, which will require certain new homes be solar-ready. Solar-ready means designers and builders will have to reserve 250 square foot of space for solar systems and rooftops of their new homes. There are a number of alternatives to this 250 square foot of space, including pre-wiring the home for the solar, installing solar water heating and similar items such as that. Your boards should also note that solar-ready mandate only applies to homes that are built in subdivisions of 10 or more homes, and that's when the subdivision map was deemed complete in January of 2014. So the good thing is this will not affect any of our existing subdivisions today. Let's see, moving on here, the last significant change mandated by the state includes a water conserving measure, Senate Bill 407 authored by Padilla in 2009. The bill inspired the most recent changes to the state's green code. What this means to our residents and business owners currently, prominently at our residences until the year 2017, graded until 2019, we start seeing this flowing into our multifamily housing stock. But beginning this January, any alteration or addition work requiring a county building permit will further require the replacement of any water fixtures that not meet today's low-flow rates. The requirement will not pertain to homes which were built 1994 or newer, and the reason for that is, is the state believes that that product out there actually has a good low-flow system in it today, and will not apply to maintenance and repair projects of any existing home. So I want you to know, I'm proud to say that my staff's currently working on, and we've collaborated with CALBA, the California Building Officials Organization, and preparing a document today, our policy document, that's setting that projects that are exempt from plumbing fixture upgrades will include re-roofing, window changeouts, sewer septic line repairs, siding, water heater replacements, and so on and so forth. What we're trying to do is enable the community to maintain its existing stock while having to go in and replace product that's not necessarily related to their, just maintaining their current use. Finally, and the only staff recommend change comes from, and driven from, a citizen complaint is our recommendation to limit the height of non-permitted accessory structures to 12 feet in height. Today, non-permitted accessory structures, what I mean is 120 square foot or smaller sheds, tool sheds, playhouses, and similar structures can have a max height of 30 feet set by our zoning ordinance. We've had several citizen complaints where we've had those structures that have been up to that, including one that's been, most notably, up to 29 feet in height, and that raises some concern with the residents as well as the structural integrity of those type of tall structures. So for this reason, and in coordination with other county, or excuse me, California communities, we're seeing this type of a height restriction being applied to those non-permitted structures. For that reason, I recommend this amendment to your board today. Finally, the Sacramento Area Builders Exchange, both the Placer County Contractors Association, the Contractors Association of Truckee and Tahoe, have received these proposed amendments, excuse me, and I have yet to receive many comments from them speaking to those. So with that, today I recommend a proposed ordinance to effectively adopt the state's 2013 Building Standards Code with local amendments to your board, and with that I have any, answer any questions for you.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wished to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action, for adoption. It's been moved and seconded to approve Item Adopt the State of California Building Standards Code. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, item is moved. Thank you, Tim. Now we'll move to Item 8, Health and Human Services Public Health Revenue Agreement, California Department of Public Health Preparedness Comprehensive Agreement presented by Wesley Nix. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Wesley Nix, Public Health, Environmental Health, and Animal Services Director. The action requested on this item is to approve a revenue agreement with the California Department of Public Health to implement a comprehensive public health emergency preparedness program. Placer County has received this funding for the program since 2002, and this marks the third year of a five-year grant cycle. This funding enables your Health and Human Services Department to try and prevent, respond to, and plan for rapid recovery from emergencies that impact public health. These events can be naturally occurring or man-made intentional events, and the preparedness program efforts are critical for protecting and serving our community's health. This year's efforts are focused on vulnerabilities, our needs for at-risk populations, and staffing, or studying real events, rather, that have occurred in our area with priority placed on certain essential items identified by the California Department of Public Health, which include public health surveillance and epidemiology, public health lab testing, emergency operations coordination, emergency public information and warning systems, information sharing, community preparedness, medical countermeasures dispensing, and medical management and distribution of equipment. This action also allows for an umbrella contract in order to maximize the use of the funding and to add qualified partners to create an integrated emergency response plan for Placer County. I'd be willing to, of course, answer any questions you might have regarding this item.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Are you speaking to the Items 1 and 2 in this agreement?
That's correct. Yeah, both actions, yeah.
All right. It's moved and seconded to approve Item 8A1 and 2, Revenue Agreement, California Department of Public Health Preparedness Comprehensive Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you, Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll now move to Item 9, Public Works, Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, Core of the Core Construction Contract. Mr. Peter Krach.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Exciting day for the department, I think, and the county to finally get here on this contract. I'd like to introduce Dan LaPlante, longtime manager of this project. He's going to do the bulk of the presentation for you today. All right?
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Chairman, Honorable members of the board. As Peter said, Dan LaPlante, Associate Civil Engineer for the Department of Public Works, Tahoe Design Division, project manager on the project. The actions here this morning are threefold. First is to adopt a resolution awarding with county council and risk management's review and approval, construction contract number 1140, to the low bidder Q&amp;D Construction in the amount of $21,375,000 for the Kings Beach Commercial Core, Core of the Core Construction. There's no net county cost. Secondly, upon receiving documented approval of using all funds that support project construction, including the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds, to authorize the chairman to execute the contract on behalf of Placer County. And thirdly, to authorize the director of public works to approve, to approve and sign contract change orders to the amount of $1,282,500. As the board memo states, five bids were received and opened on September 24th. Our intent was to come to you last board meeting to ask for your authorization to award that contract. We had a couple of housekeeping things to take care of. The first was a bid protest that was received, evaluated, and dismissed without merit by the Department of Administrative Services. The second item, as Peter Krach mentioned at the last board meeting, had to do with the, are fortunate that we received some Community Development Block Grant funds that we were able to, of an amount of $1.5 million, that we were able to use during this first phase of construction, or part of the grid improvements that we're doing. Well, as you know, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project has been in the works for almost a decade, or over a decade, and the county has worked with its partners to come up with a new revitalized Kings Beach. When people talk about the core project, they mostly, they think about it or talk about it, they talk about the highway improvements, the roundabouts, the lane configuration, the sidewalks, the parking. And just, it's important to note that the project is much, much bigger than that, and includes millions of dollars of infrastructure in the neighboring grid. Over a mile of sidewalk is proposed to helping grid residents get from major housing areas east to west to services such as schools, library, stores, and various clubs and organizations. Major water quality infrastructure is also planned in the grid to not only protect the highway, the, excuse me, the county roads, but also the grid properties. And the highway, the, excuse me, the county roads, but also the grid properties in the form of curb and gutter channels, both lined and unlined, and water quality basins, which all in turn improve the quality of runoff and reduce the amount of runoff that will find its way to the commercial core. This reduction in stormwater is important to us because the commercial core, that allows the commercial core drainage facilities to be significantly downsized, less complex, and more efficient. And as you know, the less high-tech maintenance treatment vaults that we have, the less ongoing maintenance costs we have. Formalized on and off-street parking is proposed in the grid in excess of 200 spots. A lot of that is built on perbeous pavement, which also has water quality benefit associated with it. Bike lanes, landscaping, improved bus stops, bus shelters are all part of the new revitalized Kings Beach community. So as Peter mentioned, so today is our day to ask for your concurrence to help, to help build the new and improved Kings Beach. And your vote of approval on today's actions will take us one step closer to meeting this goal. Peter Kratz and I are here today to answer any questions you may have regarding the item or the project in general.
Thank you. Supervisor Durant.
Yes, thank you very much. Peter, I have a question with regards to the requirement of the Director to authorize and sign contract change orders. Ordinarily, I wouldn't be concerned with the signage of a change order, because many of our contracts are very small, but change orders in, in the amount of 6%, which equal 1.2 million, is there, how would you inform the board that these change orders were coming down? Would you, that's all I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good question. It is a sizable contract, 20, 21 million. Typically, we would go for it with a 10% contingency at the same time. We're going with a smaller amount, just based on the amount of funding we have today, and the fact, more and more of the issue is that it's a, it is a sizable contract, so it is, at 6%, it's over $1 million. Using that 6%, we would not need to come back to the board. Your authorization today would allow us to go forward.
I'm not asking you to come back to the board, I'm just saying that we should know when, you know, we don't have to approve it, but there's got to be some communication, I would think.
Right, and I think during the normal construction management protocol that we undergo as Public Works, kind of like our sister agency facilities, we, we would manage those change orders within that, and as long as they're within that 6% contingency, we're comfortable not having to advise the board in any formal way. If there's, possibly if there's a discretionary change order, one that we want to, something we didn't see in the design, but obviously makes sense, and it's going to go out beyond the original scope, maybe it would be something we would elect to inform the board of, but normally we wouldn't need to. And then if we, again, it's kind of like our Forest Steel project, we came to you a few years ago. I think we did a 5% contingency because it was such a large contract, just the magnitude of the contingency, we ratcheted it down to 5% to keep it, you know, I think for taxpayers' sensitivity and your sensitivity, how we use these tax dollars, we wanted to make sure that, we'd have to go back to the board if we wanted to use a higher amount beyond, again, this lower contingency that we're going forward with, with a high magnitude project.
Thank you, Peter.
Hope that helps. Thanks.
Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience wishes to address the board on this item? I just want to, this is an exciting day to moving forward another step, this has been on the radar ever since I've been on the board, and I know, I just appreciate the hard work you guys have done, Public Works and Economic Development, and the now-defunct, what was it? Redevelopment Agency, yeah. So all of those that involved, this is a great day for them, so I applaud the hard work and determination in moving this forward. And now I will entertain a motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve item nine A, Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, Core of the Core Construction Contract, number 1140. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, the item is moved. And that concludes the public portion of our meeting today, and we will now adjourn to closed session. The board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss the two related existing matters of existing litigation, and one matter of anticipated litigation. The board will also meet with its labor negotiators to discuss negotiations with PPO, and will consider a public employee appointment of Health and Human Services Director.
I'm sorry, I do apologize. My name is Sharon DuCessie. I, apparently I missed a consent agenda for caregiver appreciation month.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize, I didn't, I thought I was waiting for a second agenda. This is my first time speaking in front of you guys. And I did want to thank you guys for your service. I'm hoping I'm okay speaking on this.
Sure.
I wanted to thank every one of you for support of home healthcare workers in Placer County, and I just wanted to inform you that every eight seconds, someone, someone turns 65 in this country, and we, UDW workers, which there are some in the, in the back, back here that were waiting very patiently for me to speak, would like to make sure that the seniors and peoples with disability get quality care and are able to stay in their homes and communities. Many of our loved ones and neighbors require caregivers to function in their daily lives. The most humane and cost-effective solution for us is to invest in our home healthcare, and we would like to make this happen by putting people first. UDW has shared with you our economic impact, and it's reinvesting in IHSS program, and what, would have in Placer County. Those numbers mean hundreds of thousands of dollars that would flow into our community. UDW has entered into bargaining with Placer County, and we look forward to seeing our, seeing your dedication to this program and the providers and clients we serve for our working wage. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I know I opened it up to the public for consent, item, and maybe we rushed through it, so I apologize.
No, it's my fault. It's 17 on the agenda, and I thought it was.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You betcha.[1017.81]